Welcome to the October 24, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that Vice Mayor Farrell is on his way. He just was leaving the Finance Committee and Members of City Council. Good afternoon. Before us during the work session today, we have an invitation. We have a Planning District, Central Virginia Planning District, CVPDC for short, that we work with and do different things. And you liaise, you have a liaison. Councilman Hegelsson is on board with me. But their CEO, their directors here this afternoon with us, Alec Brechner. Alec is no longer brand new. He's over a year now in town and also in the region. So he'll give you an annual report. Next up, we have, I guess, our most recent Physical Development Committee. We had Clay give us a kind of an update on the Police Department Headquarters Construction. And I think it went really well, and people were excited about it. And so our opportunity this afternoon is to kind of have him give that same briefing, kind of show you where we are, some really impactful pictures that shows the investment that this council has made to public safety in this physical headquarters. Then also recently, it's interesting, we have a monthly meeting for Development Action Team that brings together different departments and kind of makes sure it coordinates that right hand knows what the left hand's doing. One of the things that had come up in that was a conversation about many of these places that have games of skill or chance that are inside them and also physical structures that are dedicated just simply to that component itself. But most recently, there was an injunction that the state had, it was coming through a legal process, that the Supreme Court actually then recently decided that they are illegal. And so as part of this, we have the opportunity with Tom Martin of Community Development to talk through just the practical component of what they are, where they are, and what they generate as far as potential revenue for the city and what they are. And then also the other element, this is more of a legal component, that our city attorney together with Commonwealth's Attorney, together with our police chief, we had a conversation this past Friday. So I think pretty good opportunity and also timely opportunity. Most recently, one of our council meetings, we had a development of certain apartments off of Ward's Ferry. You as a body asked us to do some legwork, do some more engagement with the developer. We've done so. This afternoon, we have an update that we're going to give you. Then we have a couple of different business item briefings that will have people from said resources like Flock and Fusis that are here with us to help kind of engage you. A couple roll call items and then close session. And with that, Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Very much. All right, moving on to our work session agenda items. The Central Virginia Planning District Commission Annual Report, Mr. Alec Brechner, Executive Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you today. The annual report is really annual only in the sense that I try to get out every so often and roughly a year if I can and just give member local governments an update on some of our progress and recent initiatives that benefit you and also to hear more importantly what's important in your community. So I appreciate the opportunity to come to your work session and hear what's pressing and perhaps explore ideas that are opportunities where the Planning District Commission might be further of assistance. So I have a brief presentation. I'll try to keep it three minutes or so, and I'm happy to entertain any questions thereafter. First of all, Central Virginia, as we define it, is the same as the Community College defines it. It's just the four counties around the city. But more importantly, the Planning District Commission itself is 23 members. There are two per locality in our region, and then two members of the General Assembly, and then the Executive Director of the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance comprise our entire board. And that's important. We think of us as a commission with a group, and Councilor Hegelsson is our vice chair. It is a group that comes together to discuss important topics of regional significance like economic development, transportation, environmental quality, and other topics that are difficult for one locality to manage by itself. I think of the James River, the utility of stewarding it by working with Amherst County, and how it would be difficult for one to fare well in managing it without the support of the other. Some of the initiatives that we deal with regularly and some of the brands that we've started, the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Organization is a federally recognized transportation planning body that is as dollars for planning purposes, and then we make application for grants to help with implementation. We also are involved in emergency radio communications. We coordinate 911 first responders throughout the region and have housed the Virginia Career Works Staff, which is the Workforce Development Board staff for our region. An important workforce development topic that we've been working on over the last several months has been a creative partnership in Appomattox, which has received a bit of news coverage, and it is a partnership between Appomattox Christian Academy, the county, and Central Virginia Community College. And our goal is to stand up, our assistance, we are just assisting this partnership, their goal is to stand up a career and technical education operation in Appomattox for the first time. And that would include things like emergency medical technician training, welding training, and the like. And if you're familiar at all with welding equipment, it's quite expensive. And so we've been assisting them with some grant applications to help get this thing stood up. We're also spending a fair amount of time and energy on housing. It's really a fairly new effort and initiative for us. The CVPDC had benefit of a $2 billion award from an entity called Virginia Housing, which is statewide organization. We're able to bring those resources to this region, and more than $1 million of that has been invested in the city of Lynchburg in three different developments by for-profit and nonprofit developers to create new opportunities for both homeownership and rent or occupancy. We're also involved in housing rehabilitation. We assist member local governments with that as well. A couple of other things we're doing, brownfields redevelopment to support economic development. We support our localities with infrastructure development grants. As I mentioned, the James River previously. But most importantly, what we do is try to connect our region to state and federal resources that we can more competitively receive if we work together. And so that's really our goal at the Planning District Commission, is to provide support to our member local governments, you are our stakeholders and our owners. And we appreciate the opportunity to work. Our office is brought down here at the Bank of James Building to work and live and support Lynchburg and the rest of Central Virginia. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I have my contact information there. We have a website, LinkedIn, Facebook, all the requisite means of communication that you might expect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Councilman Hegelsson?
Just one that I think I mentioned when we met with our congressman the other day. Lynchburg and Campbell coordinated very nicely a long time ago with just something as simple as the traffic lights, the timing on Ward's Road. With that, it was a grant, I believe, I'm not sure exactly who it was, but the Central Virginia Planning District Commission, as you mentioned, kind of gets two folks together, where Ward's Road, the lights were synchronized, where people could go all the way through fairly easy without stopping, and then it changes and bottlenecking. That worked very well, and it'd be nice if we could somehow do the same thing with regard to Timberlake Road, because we have the same thing. We're going from Lynchburg, most of it, but then it goes into Campbell County. And it would be nice to figure out what was done before to synchronize that.
Absolutely. You'll have to get that done.
And the other thing, what you can do to help with the others, I know we're not having any kind of airport authority, but the ability for others to where we can really, you know, when we expand the Lynchburg city's airport, that helps all the counties. It helps everybody. And so whatever we can do on something that is, everybody should be pulling the oars together without going to an authority, of course, but the best that they can help us or the way you can get federal or state grants for that is very helpful.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Police Department Headquarters Construction Update, Mr. Clay Simmons.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for having me this afternoon. I'm here to talk to you about the overview of the Police Department. As Winder had mentioned, this was in front of PDC on October 10th, so just a replay of that same presentation. Essentially, the project is a what we call full scope project, so it consisted of the land acquisition, design, and construction of a modern, state-of-the-art police department for current and future needs. There's room for expansion in the building designed into the project. The building is three stories, and when it's complete, it's going to be just shy of 94,000 square feet, which is a significant increase over the amount of space that they have currently spread out over multiple facilities. Notice proceed was issued on October 14th of 2022, provides 847 days for construction. The math all works out on that. They should be complete in early February of 2025. Currently, the project is really looking good, and we are on schedule. Just going to run through some quick renderings and then current status shots of the building. This is the north facade. Again, the scope of work is the entire site development. We had to run utilities to the site, which are largely complete, and essentially from stormwater through utilities, ground up all the way through roof. So it's a complete site development. It's the scope of project. Again, this is the current status of the north facade. Project's currently well underway. We are ending what I call the high gratification part of the project, where you've got stuff coming out of the ground. Every day, there's changes, there's something great to see. We're going to be narrowing in on that closing out pretty quickly here as the structure gets completed and we switch over to interior work for the winter. Contractor is currently pushing to get the building completely dried in so the trades can work inside all winter without delay. It's just going to be far less exciting once we get to that stage. Steel, we're at 95%. Utilities are essentially complete. The structural slabs are all poured. They're starting to put siding on the building. Brick has shown up. So again, we're making that push to get the building envelope ready for winter. This is a rolling assets building. It's essentially a glorified name for a large garage. All of the special duty vehicles, your SWAT vehicles, your response vehicles, this is where they're going to be housed. It's a little bit further along than this. Again, these images are from the 10th, so they've got a little bit of age to them already. Here's your south and east facade. Again, you can see the framing and sheathing are well underway. The scaffolding that is in this image is a hydro scaffolding, and that is in place for the brick masons to start laying the brick on the site. Brick has started arriving, and we expect that to commence here pretty quickly. Overall, from a financial perspective, the project is about 29% complete. Just a shot of the roof progress. Again, it's further along than this at this time. Some interior photos giving you an idea of the scope of the mechanical plumbing and electrical systems that go into a building like this. It's really a complex undertaking. Contractor's doing very well with this, along with some interior shots of the framing that's well underway at this time. Shot on the left is looking from the rear of the building towards the front, down the main corridor. The shot on the right is the K-9 unit that's currently underway, and so the dog kennels there in the photo on the right. Photo on the left here is the clear story level of the lobby, and the photo on the right is the clear story levels for the public meeting rooms that should really be nice features for the building and for the public spaces. And with that, that completes my presentation. Answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for council? No? Looks great. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. Skilled gaming, blight, and safety concerns, Mr. Tom Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As the city manager mentioned, when he queued up the meeting this evening, that skilled games has been in the news. However, this is something that city staff has been following and had already planned to start addressing and present information to council before that, because these and other types of uses really create issues of safety and blight in our city, and they also tend to locate in buildings that are vacant and hard to lease otherwise. So just a little bit of the timeline, these types of gaming machines were banned by the General Assembly in July of 2021. They were classified as illegal gambling. Shortly thereafter, there was a lawsuit filed against the Commonwealth of Virginia by Sattler Oil Company, which essentially argued three things. One, that these are skilled games, it's because it takes an element of skill. They're not gambling. They also argued that there was a violation of freedom of speech, and they also are arguing that you're singling out one type of game over other type of arcade games. Being that, as it may, there was an injunction issued against, there was a junction issued against the ban out of Greensville County, Virginia, which is down near Emporia in December of 2021, and that's why you saw the machines go out in July of 2021, return in December, and they've been present ever since. As we know, last Friday, I believe, October 13th, the Virginia Supreme Court ordered the Greensville County Court to lift that injunction, so the ban is back in place. So we have some things to decide on how we're going to go about enforcing that. But the original case, Sattler Brothers Oil Company versus Commonwealth of Virginia, goes back to court in December of this year. I believe it's a three-year trial. So for about two years where that has left these machines is that they are highly unregulated and untaxed, bringing in $0 to the city. So what we have here is nine locations that are standalone facilities. That means it's nothing but these skilled gaming, skilled games. These nine facilities are operating in violation of a couple of things. One, our zoning ordinance, which does not permit gambling or casino uses. They're operating without business license, and they're occupying without certificates of occupancy. The other green dots on the screen are where they're located in other type of uses like restaurants, convenience stores, and it very well may be more than what's just the green dots, but we are aware of the nine standalone. So we had planned to do this anyway, but we're informing you, we do plan to issue notice of violations to all of the standalone gaming facilities because they are operating, again, violation of the zoning ordinance without business licenses and without certificates of occupancy. And moving forward, we do plan to coordinate with Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the city attorney, and our police department in how to go about dealing with the skilled gaming in convenience stores and restaurants. This is a heat map that shows, you know, the heavy areas, and you can see there really around that Memorial Avenue, 12th Street area, Ford Avenue, Ward's Road, and Oddfellows, Old Forest Road, which is where these types of facilities are really concentrated right now. So in the future, what are we planning to do, both short and longer term? As mentioned earlier, we're going to issue nine standalone gaming facilities with notice of violations. We probably will not go with the typical 30 days. We'll probably go with two weeks, give them notice to shut down. Again, we'll coordinate with our partners, Commonwealth Attorney and Police Department and the city attorney. We're going to monitor the outcome of the December court case, because obviously that has a bearing on these types of facilities. And we plan to sweep corridor by corridor with concentrations of different types of zoning violations that contribute to blight and safety issues, because these types of violations can be directly attributed to calls for service. And that's what I have here just for those nine facilities. This is a five-year period, but there's probably 200 or so violations just for those properties. And those are things like disorderly conduct, larcenies, fights in progress, fraud, domestic violence, drug offenses. So we do plan to do some sweeps to address safety and blight concerns. Longer term, we hope to monitor our commercial corridors with vacancies and really try and help developers and encourage developers to rehabilitate these vacant structures with uses that don't, do not contribute to blight and create safety issues. So we really want to work with our developers that bring in good uses to the city. And also, longer term, we'd like to consider strengthening the zoning ordinance, particularly with gaming facilities if that's needed, but also compatible uses. Probably several times a year, you know, you have vape shops on the screen, but we get complaints when we have tobacco shops located right next door to our restaurant and the smell. So potentially, if council would like us to look at addressing those type issues, we could do so. So that really concludes where we are and how we proceed, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council? Council missions?
On the heat map, you mind flipping back to that? What are the difference between the blue and red dots, because they're not on the side?
So that's a good point, Councilman Missions. Those are the vape shops standalone and vape shops in convenience stores and those types of things.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, it seems to me that they targeted the low-income neighborhoods more.
Well, yes, because a lot of these vacant commercial structures are located in those types of areas, and they're harder to lease and fill, and that's why it's so important for us to work with our developers as they come in with good uses and try and encourage the rehabilitation of those structures.
Councilman Dole?
Thank you. This is just a curiosity question. Are these local or just state people that own these? Are they local? Or do we know?
I'm not 100% sure if they're local or not.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Wilder?
Just a little stand. Well, I'm sorry, Dr. Wilder. So the standalone facilities, I'm not aware of. The convenience stores and restaurants are obviously all over.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Just a little stand. What's the difference between the ones like in the gas stations versus those buildings? Are they the same type things?
It's the same type of machine. It's just that one is a standalone facility with nothing but the games, and the others are in a, what's a permitted use. Obviously, convenience stores and restaurants are permitted. They just put them in there to draw customers or to make additional money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Hegelsson?
You know, some of the things, I guess, they are banned by the General Assembly, and the couple of things that you did mention was, is because they're untaxed, and so I liken that back to Franklin County in the moonshine era. So hopefully, there's a better argument than it's just untaxed. You know, I guess they're banned, is what you had said, by the General Assembly?
They are banned by the General Assembly because they classified them as illegal gambling.
As illegal gambling.
Yes, sir.
And so the other thing is the business license. You know, obviously, some of that, we've changed some of the rules, so a lot of companies don't have to do business license anyway. So locally, I think you mentioned three things. So those first two, I don't know how strong of a leg we have for that, but the third one you said was it's a...
Blight and safety concern.
Blight and safety, okay. And so with that, the implementation, you're going to give notices for them to close down. I just, I know things kind of will be heating up probably if they don't close down, right?
Well, sure. Well, really, those nine facilities are no different than any other zoning violation.
Okay.
That if they're operating outside of the zoning ordinance parameters, we would issue the same notice of violations.
Okay.
It's just that these are also operating without certificates of occupancy.
That's right.
And also creating a lot of calls for service.
Okay. And so you mentioned those, those were calls for service, the 200, not the...
That's a...
Not charges, I guess, yeah. The difference between the standalone and the other, so the other would be like a game within a facility, like in a gas station kind of thing, which are...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Foley?
For everyone's educational informational purposes, and everyone, some will arise, here goes Chris again talking about a bill. In a previous life, I monitored this stuff closely. There was a bill to tax these things from a senator, from the Republican side of the Senate, and it was, in the end, rejected. And the taxes would directly go to school construction, but it was shot down. So for reference, there was an attempt.
Councilman?
One of the things, and actually kind of between what Councilman Taylor and the Vice Mayor said, popped into my head, looking at the heat map again and the locations of these things, if we were to do something with a zoning ordinance or something like that in the future, I noticed that they're kind of concentrated around our two high schools as well. And I don't like that. So I don't know if there's something that we could do to probably try to keep these away from preying on our high school students that would be a beneficial thing.
I think it's something we can definitely look at and see if we can do, but I know some types of uses you can keep within a certain distance from churches, educational facilities.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, you have me again.
Oh, yes, I do. Okay, stay where you are. Okay, an update now for the proposal for 19 apartments at 3146 and 3150 Ward's Ferry Road. Mr. Martin?
Sure. I won the prize. So a public hearing conducted on October 10th, City Council meeting, was put forth for consideration of an amendment to the future land use map and for conditional use permit in the B1 limited business district to allow the construction of a 19-unit apartment complex. After the public hearing, council tabled the item and asked us to meet with the developers who are here with us this evening to determine if there was any path forward for townhomes, which we did. It's important to note that both apartments and townhomes are permitted by conditional use permit in the B1 district, except there's more stipulations attached to the townhomes in terms of area requirements. So the original petitions are scheduled for a general business item this evening. However, the petitioner has indicated to staff that if council is more favorable towards townhomes, that they would consider withdrawing that petition, and that proposes apartments and move back to the drawing board for townhomes. So based on your discussion this evening, they'll make that decision, and the zoning ordinance does allow for petitioner to withdraw their petition at any time. So that might be a consideration for them.
Okay.
So this is just a brief timeline of how this project got to where it is today. May of this year, they originally submitted a concept plan for 26 townhomes. Obviously, there were issues with the stormwater management. Then in July of 2023, after no discussions with staff, they turned around, submitted the revised plans proposing the 24 apartments. In August, Planning Commission recommended denial of that. September, October, council tabled the items. October 13th, we met with the developer right after the council meeting, and October 16th, developer indicated that they would like to pursue options for townhomes that did not require sharing of any stormwater facilities. And we'll talk about the pros and cons of that here in a minute. So this is the May 2023 townhouse plan. You can see that it shows 26 townhouses, and the red line is the vacated right-of-way, and you can see the relocated and shared stormwater facility. This is the plan that came to council in September of 2023. 19 apartments did not require a right-of-way vacation, separate stormwater facilities, and it was tabled by council. So we looked at those options. We met with the developer again, and again, the developers indicated they'd like to pursue the townhouse option without sharing stormwater. The two main issues identified with townhomes is the zoning ordinance has a two-acre minimum size for... is the zoning ordinance has a two-acre minimum size for any townhome development. So that's one issue. And then the stormwater pond was another, sharing stormwater. We identified that early on. Staff did not think it was a good idea at the time to share stormwater facilities. Other options that included stormwater facilities being shared are possible, yet they are much more complex to deal with and timely. So, and I believe that's one of the reasons the developer dropped back and proposed apartments, because it would take so much time to get policies and procedures in place to allow the sharing of stormwater. It can be done, but issues we have to deal with is policies and procedures, determining the prorata cost share for how much the developer would pay towards that stormwater facility, because it is city taxpayer-funded. We would have to determine if, you know, sharing these types of facilities would impact the city's MS4 permit that we have, and these would likely require more city staff to manage a program like that. So, but those two options would be moving the pond and sharing it, city-maintained, and then there's also the option of sharing the pond and the developer maintaining it. City staff really thinks that if council in the future desires to do shared stormwater facilities, it may be more appropriate on larger-type developments, say an industrial park, where you could design it and have all of those policies and procedures in place. So, the path forward to 18 to 27 townhomes, they have not designed any concepts yet, but this is what my understanding is they are considering, would require coming up with two acres, and that could be done. The original two parcels that council considered for the apartments were right around 1.612 acres. They do own an additional parcel that was not included, and that's what is represented by that triangle, which is about .35 acres. That gets them really close to the two acres. They would need an additional 38,000th of an acre to get to that two-acre minimum, which could either be done through a possible right-of-way vacation request or adjacent landowner. So that is something that they could consider to get there. Again, that red line is the right-of-way vacation, and if the right-of-way line below that is their property. So, they, if they did that, they could possibly get the 18, 19 units on their property without having to move the city pond. If they wanted to do additional units, which would be north of that red line, they would need to relocate the city stormwater facility, yet it would be separate. They would just relocate it. Their cost, separate the stormwater, and then build their own stormwater facilities. So, really, the path, there is a path forward to townhomes. It can be accomplished either through a right-of-way vacation request to deal with the acreage requirements, and there are ways to deal with the stormwater.
Okay, thank you. So, to clarify, what we're being asked is if we are comfortable with them going back to the drawing board to reconsider townhomes instead of the apartments, that they will withdraw the general business item that we are supposed to consider tonight? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. They're looking for some nod from council, and I'm not sure how you would do that in a work session, but...
Just discussion.
Just discussion on it. Yes, sir.
Okay, so then we'll just open the floor to discussion on that. Who wants to...
Okay.
Councilor Henderson?
You know, looking at these two options, there's, you know, I represent this area, and I'm not inclined to vote in favor of the apartments, the way it's presented, the way it was presented tonight. And I'm also mindful that the developer, I don't, you know, think that they want to be spending a lot more money in discovering and figuring out, because it's gonna, it's gonna, some extra engineering work that may come to a point at the end anyway. So, that's the question. But as it's standing now, the apartments, if that were tonight, I would be voting against that. I spoke with the developer, I spoke with the Planning Commission members, and just rereading their minutes about some of the problems, where the location is with regarding traffic and the queuing that can happen. And they also were talking about, I think, the Planning Commissioners talked about, where council had talked about utilizing business property. Is there, and keeping business property as business, as opposed to, we've kind of had a little pattern of taking business property and then just switching it to apartments, because it may have been a path of least resistance, or there's a time now where there's growth at Liberty, and they've been needing more student housing or needing more housing, so that would have been something. But as far as business uses that could be here, what kind of business uses could actually be here?
It would be smaller offices, smaller restaurants without drive-throughs, less than 50,000 square foot.
And those are things that can be done by right?
Yes, sir.
Since it's a B1, that can be done right there. You know, I guess, just, and speaking with some, a couple of Planning Commissioners, it made me kind of think about it. You know, it is right there on Timberlake and 501, pretty good traffic area. I don't know if that's, I know they have said that they haven't been able to find, and it's been vacant for lots of years, so I'm mindful of that as well. But just my thoughts on that.
Yeah, if I may, and obviously, all of those things you pointed out, we've heard council concerns, and we do listen. The thing about the business use on this piece of property, one of the things that gave us pause was the traffic safety. And since we met on October the 10th, they did provide us some trip generation showing that the proposed townhomes would generate less trips per day, which could equate to safer conditions at Copley and Ward's Ferry Road than, say, a restaurant or something that would generate a lot more trips. So, that's one thing to consider with that property is the traffic.
But the traffic, though, as well, though, they're different, they're different timeframes, aren't they?
Sure, there are different peak hour trips.
Peak hours, when people are going to work and coming from work versus going to a business that may be a different time.
Sure, and one of the things we did talk with the petitioner about was creating more traffic analysis if they chose to go back and look at town.
And again, I don't like to, you know, someone spending a whole lot of money just, you know, doing an assessment and analysis either. I mean, that's...
Sure.
Councilor Missions?
I just think that my biggest concern with this one in particular is the traffic there, because that intersection in the morning, when buses are coming into Heritage, and same thing in the afternoon, and students, because you got high schoolers that are able to drive to school, and same thing in the evenings. That is a very, very busy, densely-used intersection there. That's my biggest concern about putting that kind of residential density right there. Yes.
So, Councilor Missions, can I ask, would that mean that you would also, because we're trying to discuss the general business item as well?
Yeah, so I just, in general, with the apartments, I would not have been in favor of that, and, you know, I don't even know that I would be in favor of townhomes. Obviously, more information can sway you one direction or the other when you see what it's going to be, but I just have a lot of concerns about putting that kind of residential density right there that's going to have very similar, probably, peak hours as the school.
Yes, sir, and if they did go back the townhome route, again, we spoke with them about submitting more analysis to show about the traffic safety, because staff does have that concern as well.
Councilman Taylor? Well, I guess we have to, I need to ask everybody their opinion until we know where to go.
I seem to be in favor of it. It's a business. It'll generate revenue, so we don't want to stop generating revenue for the city.
So would you be in favor of allowing them to go forward with townhomes and then taking the apartments off the general business?
Yes.
That's what you want to do?
Yes.
Dr. Wilder?
Question. Would it have to go back, if they decide to go with the townhouse route, would it have to go back to the Planning Commission, I guess, and be...
Yes, sir.
...a whole new process?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And I'm trying to read the notes. Was the main concern with the Planning Commission, the traffic, or...
I think it was twofold. Traffic safety at the intersection, the Ward's Ferry Road corridor study that said we should refrain from increasing traffic counts on that road. Again, the petitioner submitted information that showed this actually generates less trips than the B1 use was, so that kind of takes care of that. But I think the other thing is, is the Planning Commission has, as staff has heard, is council's concerned with the amount of apartments in this area. So those were really the, traffic and the apartments were the big issues.
You know, my biggest challenge also is the traffic, because, you know, all my kids go to Heritage, and trying to get in is a nightmare. I mean, just, it's a nightmare just trying to get in there. So, that is my biggest concern. I could go either way, but I'm just, I'm just concerned by the traffic in that corner, because it's just such an awkward spot to me for another development.
So I guess we're not making, I mean, the only thing that we're deciding right now is if we're going to remove that one item from general business, correct? It's not, we're not voting to... They're deciding.
They would...
So we're not...
Like apartments or townhomes, or you like neither of them?
Right.
And that gives them a handle of saying, maybe they would pull it and come back.
Correct. So we're not voting on...
We're not voting on it night, now, but we would vote on the apartments tonight, and if it comes back on tonight, and we didn't say that I'm voting against apartments tonight, and it comes back on the docket, then it's killed, and it can't be brought back up for a year.
The apartments couldn't.
The apartments.
Right, the apartments. So the only thing is, is that we're taking off the apartments tonight and saying, okay, we're willing to hear them come back with the townhomes or not, so.
Sure, I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they heard obvious concerns with apartments, that you may be more favorable to townhomes.
Right.
And they would be willing to go back and pursue the townhomes, which is originally what they wanted to do anyway.
Mm-hmm, right. Councilor Don?
I'm not sure I'd support anything on this whole piece of property, given the horrible congestion on that road. I definitely would not support the apartments. And 26 townhomes seems like a whole lot. If that was cut in half, that might be attractive, but not sure I would favor either one of those items.
I support them going back to the drawing board and kind of seeing where it goes as far as the townhomes, just because I think it's worth, if they're, they want to do it and see what that looks like. I think it's their time and their business and their money to do it, so I'm supportive of that. It's really up to what y'all want to do. So if
there's no any more, no more comments or questions on it? Vice Mayor, did you want to say something? No? So, I guess we'll just leave it there, and let y'all make the decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Business item briefings. Blackwater CSO Tunnel, US Pipe Agreements. This item will appear before council for a public hearing at a later date. Mr. Tim Mitchell?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We've been working, we've had briefings before on the tunnel, and we've touched on this a little bit, but we've been working with US Pipe for about a year now, trying to come up with ideas of how to minimize the impacts of the tunnel construction. And it's no doubt it's going to be disruptive to their operations, so we wanted to do whatever we could to work with them to minimize the impacts. Area down there is at a premium. The parcels are very chopped up and broken up in that area as well, so it makes it even more challenging. So, this is just kind of an overview of what we've discussed, what will be coming back. We're going to do this in stages. So the first stage is going to be a property transaction where we, the city would be giving them property in exchange for property that we would acquire to have our pump station and tunnel shaft located on. And that would require a public hearing, and the intent is to bring that to City Council in November for a public hearing, and then the second reading in December. So just a brief overview of the areas that we've talked to them about. The red areas are the two parcels that we're talking about swapping. The property along the river is the city-owned property that we currently lease to US Pipe for about $600 a month. And then the other red area is where the tunnel would begin. The blue area is, we have a tentative agreement with US Pipe to construct a parking area there to, for their employees. The current area that they're parking is where we need to build the tunnel, so we'll be displacing all their parking while the tunnel construction is ongoing. So we pave and stripe that area for them to allow their employees to park there during construction. And then the light blue area going over to that was just an easement so that they can access that through the city parcel where our water pump station is. And then they would preserve the remainder of that area for industrial access. So they didn't want to, they wanted to keep the employee parking and industrial area separate, and that's the need, and that's the reason for the access easement. And then the yellow area is just a debris pile. It's a combination of debris from city construction projects, the gas company, and also US Pipe. It's just kind of a conglomeration of construction debris. We would remove that to free up additional area for them to utilize. And then the green area is a portion of Adams Street that's really in the middle of their operations that would serve them better than it would for the city to maintain or retain. So, the proposal is to proceed with vacation of that, and that would be done sometime after the first of the year. So, a little bit more on the parcels to be conveyed to the city. This is parcel A. It's about, let's see, .31 acres, and current value of the entire parcel is about $20,000. So this parcel would be valued at less than that. And also, in conjunction with this, we would require a construction easement over the entire site that we would utilize during the construction of the tunnel. The portion of, the parcel that we would be conveyed to, we, all those, this is US Pipe, all the land holdings are under the name Griffin, still under the name Griffin Pipe, so it would be conveyed to Griffin Pipe, is 8 Adams Street. We would also retain easements to maintain the bridge and their utilities in that, in that parcel. So, that appraised value is about $24,000. And that, this is the item that would be coming to council in November for the public hearing. And this is just a layout of the parking that we're proposing. It's about 100 spaces, which that's about the equivalent number of spaces that they have currently that we would be displacing. And then the other two items, the right-of-way vacation and the debris pile, and the lower picture is a picture of the debris pile, and it's mostly just dirt and pieces of pipe and that type of thing. So the recommendation is to proceed with a public hearing on November 8th, excuse me, November 28th, to convey 8 Adams Street to Griffin Pipe Products LLC, and the remainder of the right-of-way vacation and other items would come after the first of the year. It would require council action. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council?
Just the date. You mentioned November 28th. I'm trying to see where Thanksgiving is on my calendar, but normally we...
Week, week after, I think.
Do we normally not have council meeting?
Thanksgiving is the week prior.
Thanksgiving is the week prior, that's the week after.
There's no meeting the week of Thanksgiving, so this is the week following.
Okay, because we usually only have one meeting, but I thought, don't we normally cancel a meeting?
That is our...
We're repurposing, Madam Mayor, the 14th and the 24th are the two dates that have been in your, I think, working, so the 14th is going to be the Legislative Dinner. I guess there will be a notice that it's soon sent at some point by the mayor or the city clerk about that, and then the second meeting will be the 24th.
28th, 28th. 28th.
I'm sorry, I'm getting them, so.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Mitchell? Okay, moving on. Jefferson Park and Tin Ridge Hill Overlook dedications, restrictions of... Jefferson Park and Tinbridge Hill Overlook Dedications Restrictions of Conserved Open Space Land. Mr. Wyatt Woody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The briefing in front of you is, of course, regarding the Jefferson Park and Tinbrook Hill Overlook deed restrictions. Council previously approved a community development block grant funding for park projects in Tinbrook Hill, Tinbridge Hill, excuse me, and Deerington neighborhoods. For Tinbridge Hill, the project includes a trail connection and an overlooked structure at the end of Holland Street. For Deerington, the upgrades to Jefferson Park included a new basketball court with a community chosen mural, stair improvements to the old amphitheater, and a small loop trail to the park, and a neighborhood patio with a pavilion. To mitigate stormwater runoff, the respective designers recommended that conserve open space, so setting aside land deed restriction to allow low volumes of runoff to disperse and infiltrate stormwater measures for both products, excuse me, of both projects. Conserve open space is a low-cost and state-approved measure that mitigates stormwater projects, or impact, excuse me. The practice works here due to the location of the impervious surface and the availability of undeveloped land. To dedicate the land for stormwater management purposes, the city council will need to approve resolutions to create the necessary deed restrictions. The resolutions will be scheduled for a public hearing at the November 28th meeting. Just a few of the pictures from the park. So Jefferson Park here, that shows the new basketball court with the community design mural concept. The open space there is where the deed restriction and the stormwater runoff would take place. Tinbridge Hill, that's the current overlook, and again, the runoff location for the open space down below. The CDBG funding for Jefferson Park improvements were approved by city council in fiscal years '22, '23, and '24, and the total project cost was about $1.1 million. Of course, council must hold the hearing to dedicate the easement for the purpose, and that would lead to, of course, a public hearing on the 28th and possible Jefferson Park Base Two. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Any questions from council? Comments? Looks beautiful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. The Flock Group Inc. and City of Lynchburg License Agreement and Contract. Police Chief Ryan Dudema.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. We're coming before you. This is actually going to be a license agreement and contract that Mr. Friedman will get into. We want to just give you some brief background on what Flock is. I have Shane McGregor here from Flock Safety. He'll give you a very brief presentation on what the technology is, but a very rudimentary view of it is this is license plate reader technology. There's fixed cameras that will be installed in city right-of-way, which is why we're before you today. This is something that we've received some funding already from state police in the terms of about $10,000 for initial investment in it, and we're actually seeking some additional reimbursement from them as well. They offer that through the HEAT program, which is the Help Eliminate Auto Theft program that they've been running for many, many years. So this technology is great technology for us in that it'll allow us to locate missing persons, wanted individuals, stolen vehicles, and other things. We can put license plates into a system that will say, you know, license plate ABC123 is associated with either a wanted individual or a missing person, and anytime a vehicle goes past one of these installed cameras, it will alert all the officers that are working there. This technology also ties into other jurisdictions as well, so we can use this technology in conjunction with other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth, and I think Shane will speak to that in just a minute. This is all run through all the same CGIS requirements. CGIS is Criminal Justice Information Services, so that is what the FBI states is the standard for security related to all that data and how it's transmitted. That also goes through state police, through our Virginia Criminal Information Network, as well as the National Criminal, sorry, National Crime Information Center. In addition to this technology with Flock is called a Raven system. That is a gunshot detection system. I'm sure you've probably heard of those throughout the country. They've become more and more popular. This technology, we would also be looking to move forward with, to install that technology in city right-aways. And what that does, again, I will let the experts speak a lot better to it than I can, but will allow us, when gunshots are heard in an area, it will allow them to basically kind of geolocate through these sensors to give us a very rough idea of where that gunshot was coming from and report it in close to real time, not exactly real time, but a lot of times, we don't always get some of these calls until much later, till after they're done. We have 15 proposed camera locations in the city. How we will get to those is we are looking at main entry points into the city where we see high traffic volumes, as well as we're using VDOT traffic counts for areas of the city that have a higher volume of traffic. We will then also use that and coordinate with any of the county partners that already have this system in. So for example, if we have a neighboring county that has a camera at an entry point to their county that's adjacent to ours, it would be somewhat foolish for us to put another camera 10 feet down the road when we can already access the information from their cameras. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Shane McGregor, have him come up and do a presentation, and then we'll kick it to Mr. Friedman, and then certainly we'll be available to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Shane McGregor with Flock Safety. I want to thank you all for your time today. Some slides to show. I'm excited to be here tonight. I do live in Lynchburg. My family lives in Lynchburg, so I'm a community member. Flock Safety is based in Atlanta. I'm the territory sales manager, so I cover all of Virginia and West Virginia. We have about 52,000 cameras installed across the country. We're installing about 500 to 1,000 per week, and these are license plate recognition cameras. So the goal is, these are installed, taking pictures of vehicles as they're rolling through, and then the law enforcement agency gets notified very quickly of NCIC and other lists, stolen vehicles, missing persons, which we'll cover. One of the key points is that law enforcement agencies can work together. So if you see this slide here, there's quite a few local Flock partners in the area. I started with Flock last July. We had about six in Virginia. We should have about 70 by the end of the month, so we're growing very fast in the state. Few key points here. We hold the data for 30 days. It's automatically deleted. We focus on vehicles, not people, so you can't go in and search a person, but you can go in and search a license plate or a vehicle type. As a company, we're very public-facing, so we want to be honest to community about where the cameras are at, what they're being used for, and how long the data is held for. As far as, I talked about some lists that we get. So we get an NCIC list, which is missing persons, stolen vehicles, stolen plates, and warrants. The idea is that the agency will get notified in about 12 seconds. So a missing person rolls through Lynchburg, the entire police department can get notified in about 12 to 20 seconds. Chief spoke on gunshot detection, which is called Raven. This is essentially done in quarter, half, and full square mile increments. I believe Lynchburg is looking at a full square mile. The location of that is not decided yet, but the idea is that Flock installs devices out in this area. Gunshot occurs, through machine learning, we notify the police department in about 45 seconds. It varies from 45 seconds to a minute, and then we give the police department a 90-foot area of where we think that happened. Based on our research, about 60 to 70% of gunshots are never called into the police department. So the idea is that we want to give local law enforcement nine out of 10 gunshots. So gunshot occurs, they'll get notified very quickly. The last slide I have for you tonight is a success story, so this is Chesapeake Police Department. This is specific to Falcons only, but they had LPR installed in September of '22. Up until May of this year, they had 228 cases closed, 28 firearms recovered, 118 vehicles recovered, 91 persons and four missing persons found. Since I joined Flock in July, we've had at least 15 missing persons found in the state of Virginia alone, in conjunction with other agencies across the country. So ultimately, the goal of Flock is to help give law enforcement time back in the day and make communities safer. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Comments?
I guess...
Governor Hudson?
No questions, just... Yeah, you can sit down, no questions. But as I look at this, I reminded of the year that I graduated, which was 1984 from high school, and the Big Brother concept. I appreciate you can use it for different things, and I just, I don't like this. I mean, I'm sure there's lots of benefits, lots of neat things. I just don't like that concept of the Big Brother watching you. Several years ago, we had, a few police chiefs ago, we had license plate readers, and that was originally thought that it was purged, you know, pretty quickly, only to find out that it was kept for a long period of time. And then we had to actually say, no, you're not keeping it, because it can be utilized very poorly to say, oh, you were driving at this particular road, you know, three months ago, and that data was kept. And so we actually, council, I think, had a resolution to say, that's got to be purged. I know you put on there 30 days, it may have been as much as, you know, 24 or 48 hours kind of purge, because of the fact that if it's truly somebody that is missing, or somebody that's, you know, running from, you know, whatever, and the license plate reader gets them, that happens instantly. If it's not used instantly, there's no reason to keep it for a long period of time, because you're trying to find that moving vehicle, and unless it's gotten instantly, there's no reason to say, oh, they were there 30 days ago. So I'm not in favor of this, just as I'm seeing it now. I'm sure other people have different ideas, but I just, 1984, Big Brother's watching you, so.
Dr. Wilder?
On the surface, so far, I like the idea, because I think we just need more resources, more tools in the toolkit for our police department. You know, in World II, I get so many complaints about gunshots and things of that nature, even like the flag shop, she says she hears them every night. I know it's gotten better on the lower end of Main Street, but they always complaining about that, and I think just we need more tools to assist our police department, although the police department is in favor of it. I'm inclined to support it, because they just need more tools in their toolkit to address crime, to address shootings, to address all these challenges we have in our community so we can have a safer community. Thank you.
Councilor Missions?
I do actually have some questions for you, if you don't mind stepping back up. Is there a data sharing agreement involved with this, with the city and Flock?
A data sharing agreement?
Yeah, because you guys obviously are retrieving that data through your system and then transmitting it to the Lynchburg Police Department and the Real-Time Crime Center in this scenario, correct?
Yeah, so all of the data is held on an Amazon web-grade, Amazon web government-grade server.
Okay.
And after 30 days, it's automatically deleted. It's technically the police department's data, but we manage it for them. So every single search that a police officer does is audited, so each officer has a login. So chief's going to be able to do internal audit as many times as he'd like to see who searched when and where.
Now, is there any, I know that with a lot of these types of technology, there's training programs and things like that when you implement it into other places. The data that you get to do those training programs or the examples or so forth, is you have a right to any of the data, keeping it beyond 30 days for any reason? I guess is the question that I have.
The data should not be held for longer than 30 days, and we automatically delete that. There's some states, I believe, across the country that require 90 days or even longer. So in those states that the state requires that, we do keep that data longer for them. But in the state of Virginia, every agency that uses Flock, 30 days, it's automatically deleted off, and they cannot access it.
And you said, but you said should, right? So is there the ability, I guess, for somebody within Flock to keep certain pieces of data?
No, it's automatically deleted. It's a hard delete.
Now, what would cause that to change?
It should never change. In the state of Virginia, unless the state of Virginia says that we should, we need to keep the data longer, it will stay 30 days.
All right. And then, I guess one of the other questions that I have is, so when you're keeping data for 30 days, what you're doing essentially is you're keeping, you could search the database within 30 days for a specific license plate and find out where it's been for those previous 30 days?
Correct. Near the, within the, if it's been captured by the camera, then correct.
And then same thing with make, model, color vehicle?
Yes.
That sort of thing?
Yeah.
So there's a manual search feature, I guess, with this that would allow somebody to just plug in a license plate number and figure out where they've been for 30 days, if they were picked up?
They, so because the system's auditable, if you go in and just hit search, nothing will happen. You're supposed to submit a case number or some sort of investigative number. There's no reason any officer should be looking at this just for fun or to check on people. This is related to cases and investigations.
Yeah, I just have a lot of concerns, similar to like what Councilman Helgason asked or mentioned, and, you know, the issue that I have with this is that once you, once we put our foot inside that door where we start putting up cameras that have the ability to follow people through their license plates...
Vehicles. I'm sorry to interrupt.
People through their vehicles, license plates, things like that. That's a very slippery slope that I don't like, and I do see the benefits on one side, but I also have to weigh the rights of the people in our city to be able to be secure in their persons' places and things, including their vehicles, without, you know, the government being able to follow them, essentially, right? I get that. We should be able to follow people that are being, you know, that are wanted for a crime or that there's a warrant out for their arrest, or be able to follow a vehicle that's stolen or things like that. But the concern that I have is, in order to be able to follow that very small fraction of the population, we are creating the capacity to follow the entire population, and that's what concerns me.
Councilor Madoli?
Yeah, I don't really have a question for you. I just think it's really a very efficient method to provide and enhance public safety, and the data that you put forth is certainly impressive and would well be worth it. The idea of capturing somebody's license plate, they do it all the time. You go on the Pennsylvania Turnpike, you get your bill in the mail, so you know they've captured your license plate. You do the expressway around 95, you do the same thing, so I'm not, I'm not sure that that's a solid argument. And my other point with that is that, you know, if you're not doing anything wrong, why worry? So.
Dr. Wilder?
And I think the idea, the idea to that, I really liked is the Raven portion about the gunshots, especially since that's a big issue in our community, that that could really be beneficial to our police department in tracking those shots fired.
Dr. Wilder?
I just had a question for the police chief. I'm sorry. Councilman Taylor had a...
Mr. McGregor, if you would just want to stay, to have a seat and just stand next to the chief, that way you don't have to keep going back and forth, because I do have a question for you, so.
I'm sorry, chief, do you see any negative, any negative sides to this, and how, what are your main benefits of the program?
I think what it does for us is it allows us to leverage technology to use in a way that would otherwise require a lot of human resources, right? There's an investigative component to this, the 30 days, and I think Councilmember Helgason brought up, you know, the concerns, and he's exactly right in the sense that a lot of the stuff this would be used for is right-of-way stuff, right? A missing person, we want to try and find them as quick as we can, right? But think of that missing person, right, that's been missing now for a week, and we've already purged data after 24 or 48 hours, and then that car that we know that person was recently in goes through, right? We want to have data to go back and look, because the investigative piece of that is a lot of times, we don't get car information right away, right? A lot of times, through our detectives working cases and making contacts with people and identifying, interviewing witnesses, they generate information that can then say, okay, you know, that homicide we had two weeks ago, we now believe that there was a black four-door Buick that was involved in that crime. We can then take that and run it back 30 days, especially in the area that one of those cameras may have been in proximity to where the crime was committed, to see if that car went through there, right? So it's a great piece of technology that allows us to leverage limited resources that we have, and it helps us with identifying a lot of things that we spend a lot more time right now. Right now, if we have what we would call a hot sheet, which would list all, say, the wanted people who have vehicles affiliated with them, we would be picking up those on a pretty regular basis. Stolen vehicles, for example, and I'll pull the number... Stolen vehicles, for example, and I'll pull the numbers here just so I don't misquote them, we've seen a significant increase in stolen vehicles in our community over the last few years, and that's a nationwide trend, unfortunately. A lot of times that is folks that are leaving their keys in their cars. But we have seen, for example, stolen vehicles just between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two in Lynchburg increased seventy-three percent. So in just calendar year twenty-twenty-two, we had three hundred and five vehicles stolen in Lynchburg, almost a car a day, right? So it'd help us identifying those. We have a lot of great men and women that do great police work in our community, but their ability to find stolen vehicles right now is based on using their eyes, whereas if this vehicle were to come through one of these cameras, they'd get that alert within the time that Shane mentioned, and all the vehicles, or sorry, all the officers that were working would be alerted to where that vehicle was seen recently. So it's a great piece of technology that really helps us leverage what resources we have.
Thank you. And I just, the biggest concern, the thing I question, not question, but common I have is that I get so much concern about what are they doing to address crime? What are they doing to address stolen vehicles? What are they doing to address gunshots, you know? And, you know, I just think it's so important to have additional resources to let our community know, here's additional resources that we are doing to address crime in our area so you can feel safer. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Chief, I wish we had this place a couple of weeks ago in Raleigh. My daughter's car got stolen down there.
I'm sorry?
Yes, and we just located it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Dr. Wilder?
I want to ask a-
Sorry.
So how would this help with the twenty thousand gunshots I hear every New Year?
So it will help, essentially, nine out of ten of those will get notified to local law enforcement. Whereas the research we've done, at least over sixty percent of gunshots in America are never called in. So talking about a forty-five to sixty-second notification time. We hear success stories about life-saving instances for both community members and law enforcement. Gunshot occurs, forty-five seconds, Chief and his team will be notified of nine of ten gunshots. That's, we got a ninety percent accuracy right now. It is machine learning, so essentially when the gunshot happens, we don't have a human that is listening in. It's software. So the idea that, the idea is that the machine learning will get better and better as time goes, and Flock will grow with our partners, and the technology will get better and make the community safer.
Thank you.
Council missions? Oh, sorry. Do you want to go?
So I think you just mentioned a part that kind of hit what I was thinking about with the machine learning and the technology improving and getting better and better. So one of the things that I think is probably the most concerning about this with me is a lot of these things may have, I mean, I know it's got a good intention now to implement it, but like I said, it's the slippery slope of beginning it. And as I said before, not necessarily in favor of it right now, and I don't know that I could be in favor of it, but it's not going to prevent me from trying to make it better if it does pass. So this made me more of a question for you. Is there something that we could do that would require any feature upgrades or things like that? Like, let's say that you expand your capacity down the road to be able to use that AI to actually identify faces through windshields. It could happen. I mean, I'm just saying, the technology could improve and things like that could be there. I would like to see something that would allow any future feature upgrades or changes in how the system operates and what it's able to capture and store and that sort of information to actually have to come back to council instead of being able to accept those new features, you know, within the bureaucracy, so to speak.
So I guess I don't know. Typically, with any type of contracted work, it would be going through the city manager. It wouldn't necessarily come to council. The reason this is before city council is Flock needs council's permission to be able to operate in the right-of-way, to attach their facilities to city poles and city signs, which is essentially, as I understand it, the cameras and the other facilities that were discussed. So right now, the license, I suppose what works in favor of council, if there was a concern with that, is you all do have the ability to give Flock notice of canceling the license if something came up to where, I guess if you all as a group thought it was kind of the Big Brother or a concern of a new feature that the city had acquired from Flock, but I don't, I don't even think that's something that Flock offers, and it might be something that Shane, you could speak to, is if you all even offer that type of service, that Councilman Missions had asked about facial recognition or anything like that?
Yeah, so Flock as a company is focused on vehicles. So we currently do not do facial recognition. You can also not search by human characteristics. So I've heard our founder say multiple times, we are not focused on people. So things like facial recognition is not on our roadmap as a company.
Private or publicly traded?
We are a private company.
So right now, you know, you're obviously accountable to the people that own the company, but if the growth were to explode and continue, and then you became a publicly traded company, then you would be accountable to your shareholders, which means profit. And sometimes principles go out the window with that. And that, I mean, you've really got to look at all the aspects of this, right? Like, it's not just what it's able to do now. This technology is exploding across the world right now as far as the capabilities of what we're able to do. And I understand the piece that you just shared about the contractual relationship and, but I just have a serious concern with the constitutional and civil rights implications of where this technology could go to right down the road. And I can't be comfortable with it if the technology or the ability for it to essentially follow people down the road wouldn't have to come back to us before that feature was turned on, so to speak. And I guess that's the question I have for you is, is there a way that we can put that limitation in place before we approve this so that if the features or abilities of the technology were to essentially get better and new features were to be offered, that would have to come back before us before the city could use it?
Sure. I suppose to meet that goal, city council as a group could direct me to go back with Flock and to modify the license to include some language in there to be able to do that. But as I had mentioned, the license component allows you all to terminate the agreement, the idea being to go along with the contract, but there is language in here that protects you all to be able to terminate it with notice within a fairly short period of time. It is a revocable license, but to answer your question in short, yes, you could, but council as a body would want that type of amendment in there.
I would personally support that type of amendment in there. I wouldn't just want to give blanket authority to a private company to be able to work with the police department and expand that capability down the road without us even knowing about it.
Vice Mayor Faroldi?
This is where we are, I guess. It's twenty-twenty-three. You know, I'm intrigued by this, and I'm just digging into it. I mean, I think this is such a unique concept for us to consider. I had a bunch of questions that rolled to my head, and then I got just rolling into a big, deep dive into stuff online and various sources and trying to understand a little bit more. I guess where I'm trying to come from is not unlike what's been said thus far, I'm curious about, talk to me about how other agencies outside of Lynchburg could utilize this.
Yeah, absolutely. So I mentioned earlier, we have about fifty-three thousand cameras installed across the country. We allow law enforcement agencies to share with others. So for example, Bedford County has multiple cameras. Chief and his team could share his cameras with Bedford County and vice versa, and across the entire state of Virginia and across the country. So that's how, if a missing, if someone is taken in a certain state and then they drive by camera in another state, that's how jurisdictions can work together, especially with that NCIC list that we get every four to six hours. So our goal is to allow and equip law enforcement agencies to work together to make communities safer. So they should be able to share and work together with agencies throughout Virginia and across the country.
Can you pull a page up that had the other surrounding localities that had this?
This is just local partners. We have between sixty and seventy partners across the state in various areas of the state.
I'd be interested in that information if it's possible to obtain.
I'm happy to send that over.
Thank you. Did Flock ever rebut this memo from the ACLU?
I'm sorry?
Did Flock ever abut, rebut this memo from the ACLU from, I think, twenty-twenty-two?
I'm not sure. I would have to check with Government Affairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Council missions?
One question, the Vice Mayor Faroldi's questions had me think of, do you guys have federal partners?
I believe we do. I don't have any details about specifically who we work with, but I believe so.
That's information that I would like to know.
Okay. I can inquire about that.
So I have a question. So you said earlier, the only way that a license plate would be searchable, the only purpose would be that it had to be related to a case number. So Chief, would only, your officers would have to have a case number related, that's why they'd be searching, that you could audit them at any time. So for the people that are concerned about an officer just pulling up their vehicle and just sitting there and, sorry, seeing what they've done the last thirty days, I mean, while someone that could do that, technically, they shouldn't be doing that, and if they were caught doing that, they would get in trouble for it because they should be only searching it for the purpose of a case, if it's related to a missing person or stolen vehicle or so forth, right? So that's really the only purpose that a license plate number should be entered into the system, correct?
That's correct. For search purposes, first off, they will have training before they can even get a login to the system, which is unique to each officer. And then secondly, we have very clear policies that will say when they can, for what purposes, also understanding that when they're accessing this information, they're also accessing state and federal information, which is, already has regulations applied to that, and we have policies applied to that that say you can only access that information for criminal justice purposes, meaning a criminal investigation into some type of crime that was taking place. So, and again, there would be an audit trail every time that is logged into by the individual officer of what they searched, and there would be either a case number or a call for service they were investigating if it would have not been assigned yet.
Right. So there's not officers just sitting around in your building just pulling up random license plates, just seeing what people have done?
I wish we had that much time on our hands to do that, but no.
Yeah, I thought so. And looking at the list of local partners that we have, if we were to, by using this program, we're helping our partners because if our sheriff's department in Bedford County has someone fleeing with a stolen vehicle, and now they are in the city limits, now we can, now we can pull up our cameras and help track, right? And if we don't, then we're delaying, obviously, catching that person because now we don't have the equipment to help, correct?
And vice versa.
And vice versa.
Yeah. I mean, if you just look back to the unfortunate recent homicide that is being prosecuted in Amherst County, but that started, there's a relationship between those two individuals here in the city. Had we had a vehicle license plate involved at that point, we could have put it through that system, and had that vehicle gone past the camera, we would have been alerted to it, which would help further that prosecution, investigation of that case.
And what about that massive drug bust that we just had between us and Nelson County? How would this have worked in that situation?
So again, if we knew and were investigating, let's say we had information that Mr. Smith is trafficking narcotics, and he was traveling from, let's say, it could be anywhere, Tennessee, Washington DC, anywhere, we could certainly put vehicle information in there if we had reason to believe they're involved in distribution narcotics. And then that would help us be able to say that, yeah, we believe the person was going to such-and-such locality to pick up their load of narcotics before they brought them back. And in this case, that could have helped identify where that vehicle had been, which could then further that investigation to figure out who he was buying that from and pass that information along to that jurisdiction. I'll also mention, and I can't get too much into it because it is an ongoing case, but I know that Amherst County, from talking to the sheriff there, just recently had a hit through Flock Safety that was able to track down somebody who had abducted someone in another state and then drove through Amherst County and had picked that up. And so it's a great tool, it really is. And I certainly understand some of the concerns. I recognize those and appreciate those. But, you know, we train, first and foremost, we hire and screen our officers significantly well before they get employed here at Lynchburg Police Department. We then train them very, very well. We equip them very well. We put a lot of trust in them. We trust the men and women of our department to carry firearms, and to God forbid, I hope they never have to, to take someone's life. And so we need to be able to trust them to use these systems properly. We'll have an audit trail in there to make sure that they are doing that. And obviously, if somebody violates that for any reason, they'll be disciplined for that.
So like in the case of Kingston Campbell, this would have detected the gunshots because those were done outside. So we would have, so technically with these, the Falcon, it could have detected the gunshots within-
Yeah, if it was within the radius and just-
If, for example, in that case.
And for transparency, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but real quick, I didn't mention earlier, but the Raven detection system, what we are looking at, if it's approved and we go with that, is we are looking at basically a heat map of where the majority of our gunshots are reported. And again, I can pull up the numbers, but, you know, we have gunshots reported per year. I'm sorry, I'll get to it here. In twenty-twenty-two, we had four hundred and seventy-two incidents of shots fired. Now, not every one of those is a gunshot. Sometimes they are fireworks, sometimes there are other things. But we're going to look at a heat map of where the concentration of those are being reported and then use that to establish where we would put that technology.
Okay. So in that case I was just giving the example of, we happen to know that there's a lot of shots fired in that neighborhood, unfortunately. So if there had been a camera down there and they picked up those shots fired, based on the data that you shared, there was a high probability that there would have been a response quickly, potentially. And if we had had the license plate readers close by and a vehicle had been detected in the area, there's a chance that we could have maybe solved that crime, which is still not solved, unfortunately. And that is why I absolutely support this because we are all getting emails, and I get stopped all the time by people who are either victims or families of victims who are desperate to find out what's happened and to know more and get these crimes solved. And, you know, the data that you showed earlier, the fifteen people that, missing people that were found through this program, I mean, think about their families. I can't imagine how grateful they are that this program existed to help save the lives of their loved ones. And, you know, obviously, stolen vehicles, that's important to people, too. And so, and this is obviously supported at the state level, our governor and our attorney general and everybody is on board with this program. So I trust that they are fully aware that this is not a Big Brother issue, I would assume. I mean, can you speak to that? Have, do you, have you spoken to, have either one of you spoken to anybody at the state level? Is this something that you can speak to?
Yeah, so I have met and presented to the AG's office, and they seem very supportive.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Council Huxson?
So I guess with that, you know, just you used an example of a case that would, this wouldn't have done anything because there were lots of shots that were fired into the house. Obviously, the people that are in the house are hearing glass breaking. All the people around are seeing shots fired. And typically, people are calling, I mean, did nobody call that night when those shots were fired? I imagine, I don't want to speak to a specific, but since you've mentioned a specific, so, and that's why I think so many years ago, Ben Franklin so wisely stated that those who are going to trade a little bit of- that those who are going to trade a little bit of liberty for a little bit of safety will eventually have neither. And so that is what I'm fearful of and I can, you know, rather than taking an emotional case and say this would have solved it, I think is totally ludicrous because of the fact that there are so many shots that were fired. People were calling. And so I guess this comes up in about a month or so when we actually have a public hearing on it or an actual vote on it. But I haven't been convinced of any ability to trade a little bit of liberty for a little bit more safety, as Ben Franklin wisely stated.
I don't know if this is for you to respond to, the chief or attorney or the manager. So I'm just offering it for the interesting things to contemplate tonight. So forgive me. By no stretch of the imagination, I am an outright supporter of this organization. And yet, in reading through this, I found this interesting. Judges in Virginia, for example, ruled that a Virginia privacy law, parentheses, which states that personal information, quote, "shall not be collected," end quote, "by state agencies," quote, "unless there's a need for it clearly established in advance," end quote, end parentheses, bars police from collecting and storing ALPR data outside of a specific investigation. But for example, if state police were accessing Flock's ALPR database without considering themselves as, quote, "collecting" the data held by Flock, that would represent an invasive end around and the intent of Virginia law. So I'm curious if by adopting this, are we collecting the data or are we simply accessing it?
Mayor, could I ask the Vice Mayor, were you reading the ACLU case?
I was reading a memo that was referencing the ALCU case from 2018. Yeah.
And I would appeal to Matt on the procedural history of how ultimately that was adjudicated.
Sure.
Because I think you asked it earlier for him as to where it was as far as proceedings.
Yeah. I guess more, I guess more in referencing that this paragraph struck me. So I'm trying to understand, are we, is the city collecting the data or is, are we accessing it through a private entity?
Or given a license for someone to access it if we.
This is a hard question to answer.
I, I'm enjoying, I'm enjoying it. It's a, it's an interesting policy discussion.
The way I understand it, and I would probably appeal to Shane, is we are subscribing to their services. These facilities are owned by them and we have some type of subscription where we can access their systems. And what they collect in the city becomes part of a database or part of some type of private facility or group that LPD and other law enforcement agencies can access. So I don't know, I can't answer that specifically as far as the meaning of collection there. I'd probably have to look into that further, but I guess I would also appeal to the police chief and Shane on that.
If it's helpful, I'm already expecting something from their government relations folks. So if you'd like to respond, please feel free to, but that's kind of what.
All I can say is, and certainly I am not an attorney, nor do I pretend to be one, but I believe the case you're referencing was a case that kind of put a lot of license plate readers on kind of pause, for lack of better terms, around the state. I think that case was adjudicated and I think it addressed that issue. I don't want to go out on a limb and say how it addressed it, but I think it addressed that issue. So if we could maybe research that and get back with you on that, that might help clarify.
And please do. I, like I said, that paragraph just caught me and it was an interesting one to contemplate. Thank you for being here and responding to all of us. I'm intrigued to see what information you bring back.
Councilor Missions?
So I guess the first question would be Shane, is that right? Where are the AWS servers located?
It's my understanding that the data is held all over the country. So there's multiple servers, databases, Northern Virginia, I'm sure. Essentially, when we take a picture, it gets turned, gets turned into a lot of different numbers. So it's essentially code. And then that, my understanding from a sales and territory point, I'm not in IT, is that that long data or that picture gets spread throughout the country. So my understanding is that it's spread throughout multiple data servers owned by AWS throughout the country.
Okay. And then I guess the, the privacy laws and data collection laws to the data collected in Lynchburg would always be catered to Virginia and local legislation and ordinances and things like that, right?
Correct.
So no matter where it's held, it's always going to be within Virginia law.
To my understanding, correct.
That way. So then that's where this is probably kind of a question for the four of you, like the Vice Mayor's question was. I believe it's the Data Collection Act, I think, the Virginia Data Collection Act. So how's that going to work when I make a request for the data you collected about me, which I have a right to in Virginia law?
For what it's worth, I did read through the agreement that we're considering and it does have the stipulation that anything subject to FOIA, generally speaking, you know, we would have to be subject to FOIA.
But this is not, I'm not talking about FOIA. I'm talking about the Data Collection Act that actually, you know, there's a difference between FOIA, where I can request whatever public records that aren't exempt, and then the Data Collection Act, where I can request data that's collected about me. Right?
I believe in a FOIA request, as the Vice Mayor just stated, that's, I mean, you can say, hey, I want to find where the license plate was. I mean, that's, so.
Pretty sure that that's probably going to be exempted. The FOIA would probably be exempted on that, but, but the Data Collection Act thing is definitely an interesting.
Lot of questions between now and next time.
So I think what would be helpful, and I've gotten some great questions to look into. So I will take a look at those. If there's any others that you all have, I'm happy to, to hear them and look into them. I'll certainly speak with our Flock representative again and the police chief and try to address some of these concerns before we come back on the 28th.
There could have something about the cost as well.
So there should be a financial impact. I guess we'd have that on there.
Should be in the contract.
Yeah.
That goes to exhibit to the license.
I appreciate you being here and if, I would like to say that if Kingston's family or friends were watching, I hope that you were not hurt by anything that Councilman Hugson said, that if it felt, it came across insensitive. So.
Said what?
By your reference to trading your liberty for whatever, whatever you said.
That's what it is. The chief of police said he understands those concerns.
Right. Anyway, thank you for being here. I appreciate. We'll move on to the FUSES Public Safety Platform. Thank you very much.
Please don't put words in my mouth what I said when I quoted Ben Franklin. So.
Yes, but you were being insensitive.
No, I'm not being insensitive. I'm quoting Ben Franklin is what I said. I think he's one of our people.
You're being insensitive. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're before you for information discussion on FUSES. This is a real-time, basically, technology platform for Real-Time Crime Center, Intelligence Center, if you want to call it that. It allows us to basically take a lot of disparate information from videos and ingest it into this. Works in conjunction with the body cameras and fleet cameras that we already have in our system. It can certainly work with any other camera that, across a variety of platforms. I won't get into the technical stuff. I have Chris Taylor here, who I'll introduce in just a minute, from FUSES to kind of walk you through a little bit better what it does. But, you know, this platform is going to allow us, again, an efficiency that we don't currently have. It allows us to be able to ingest this video and then search this video for information within timeframes and certainly related, again, no different than the previous technology we talked about, related to criminal investigations or any type of a critical incident that may be going on at the time. This is something, again, that came through as far as a grant back 2023, Department of Criminal Justice Services, part of the ARPA funding. This is something the governor and the AG's office pushed forward for trying to address violent criminal activity in Virginia. We were awarded $250,000 for a two-year contract with FUSES. This came before you previously. Hill City Connect, I know is a concern with some of this that came up. And that is one component of the system. I want to make sure people understand that. That is not everything that FUSES does. That is one component of it. And that is obviously the ability for folks in the community to voluntarily register cameras and allow access to those cameras under certain circumstances. We can get into the tech, the technology of that and all the specifics in just a minute. But, you know, we're going to continue as a police department to leverage technology to try and address criminal activity, especially violent criminal activity in our community. That's something that's really, really important and it allows us, this technology allows us to do that again much more efficiently with fewer human resources in doing that. We want to enhance public safety where our hope is that this will help us with our clearance rates of all crimes, but again, specifically with violent crime. And I'm going to pause there and I'll introduce Chris Taylor with FUSES. He is also retired deputy chief with Metro Nashville Police Department where he served thirty years. So, thank you.
I'm a tech company, so I brought my fancy iPad for you. Real quick and I'll be kind of brief about it, we don't ask governments to ever buy another camera. It's ludicrous too. There's a million cameras in the public right now. You can't walk into a business without being filmed. You can't walk on a street corner without somebody's exterior camera seeing you. So the difference of what we said is FUSES allows the police department access to those cameras. And the example I'll give you is your department, fantastic department, by the way. I've got to be in lots of different places, an amazing place. About a hundred and seventy-four officers, you're about thirty short, so you're about twenty percent understaffed. Sadly, that's about what the rest of the nation is dealing with also. So the idea is if you have a property crime in a neighborhood, you've had two-hundred-something guns stolen out of cars this year. Those are guns that are turned around and used for violent crimes. We know that. So the idea is to try and catch those people as soon as they get a gun before they get another one because it's the same groups over and over. So what happens, you get that call, you'd walk into the neighborhood, you'd walk the neighborhood, you'd canvass it. We're all familiar with that. You'd go and see, knock on doors, one, to see if anybody saw anything, and then two, to look and see if they had a camera. And if they had a camera, can you, you know, pull the video up? Can you show us and see if we found the suspects? Well, what we do is, and through part of the registry, is when people sign up for their cameras, instead of having to take an officer, walk the neighborhood, hopefully get one or two videos, maybe. And to be quite frank, it's kind of tough because you're having to catch people when they're at home and maybe everything's right. Because they're volunteering, and again, this is all permission-based. People are giving you access to it. They'll say, hey, here's my email. Here's a phone number. She can contact me. And through the platform, we can reach out and hit everybody in that neighborhood with one email. And it just says, hey, last night between nine and 10 o'clock, we had a red Dodge Charger breaking into cars. Can you look at your video and tell us? And what they can do is at their leisure, look up Ring, Comcast, whatever system they use, pull it up, say, oh, I do have video of that from last night. They can take that video, drag and drop it over to a link that's in that email. It comes back and then detective has it. So what we've done is we've saved a detective countless man-hours that they don't have right now to do for property crime, but those property crimes lead to violent crimes. I'll take it a step further. We go to a business, we call them strip malls, shopping centers, and they're same thing, break-ins, shootings, whatever it is. Detective officer goes out, walks the, everybody knocking on the, knocking on the business. Hey, have you got a camera? If you are, can we get access to it? Do you have the password? That kind of stuff. Well, same thing. If they've volunteered to give us access to their cameras, now the detective can do a search right then and there, pull up that video and look for that red Dodge Charger, look for whatever it was that happened. And again, I want to just kind of go over some, some of the questions I heard. We will never do facial recognition and the reason I can tell you we won't is because the Supreme Court has not said what's acceptable. And until a private business gets a strong court ruling on it, they're not going to do something that's going to get them sued. And the litigation involved in facial recognition, especially with minorities right now, is unbelievable. And that, that is why no one's going to jump on it from a private company anytime soon. As far as how long we hold it, the core devices we use for the businesses, we call it a tactical recording. It's about four days. And the reason being is if something happens on a Friday, when they come in Monday, we hope they can still see it. And after that, and it's a small DVR built in the device, so it re-records over itself. So it's impossible to have longer than that. Once it hits its limit, it starts re-recording. So you don't ever have to worry about ninety days, a hundred days or anything like that. That's taken care of by the device itself. We have a really strong audit trail and I can say this because I'm in law enforcement or was. We had guys and gals that would look up Keith Urban, Carrie Underwood, different people. And you're just, you had to police-proof this. And I don't mean it ugly when I say it, but it's just one of those, you've got to make sure people don't do dumb things with it. And so what we've done is we have a super robust audit trail. Anytime you pull up a video, there's a watermark on it. There's, the audit trail goes so far as you can look up by individual, usually you can look up a camera. Let's say the mama pop gas station at the corner has given you access and they're concerned that an officer might be looking at their camera more than they should. You can pull up that camera and say, show me everybody that's ever looked at this camera through the FUSES platform. Show me not only where they looked up, when they looked up and what device they were logged into when they used it. So it's really robust in the sense that it's impossible to do something dumb without somebody catching you on it. And that's important because I think when you're asking someone to share that video asset with you, you have to be able to reassure them why it's not going to be misused and that's going to be done for the right purpose. And that's really important. Another part, when you brought up a public information request. The great thing about the way the FUSES platform is set up, and obviously this has come up several times before, is that the video isn't the police department's, I almost said ours again. The video's not the police department's. It's the individual business that owns it. So it's not subject to public information request. So if somebody says, hey, FUSES or Lynchburg Police Department, give me this video from this incident that happened over here. They can't do that. It's not their video. They don't have the right, they don't have the legal ability to give that away in a public information request. The business isn't subject to it because it's, they're still a private business regardless of what it is. It'd be the same as if there's a robbery that happens today at, pick whatever store you want, at Cheddar's Restaurant. A robbery happens, the police show up and they're going to say, hey, can I see the video if you have some? Absolutely. And they pull up the video and right now what happens is they have to burn it. It used to be a CD, now it's a flash drive. And you hope that everybody has those. This just allows us to do it immediately. It allows us to see that video. And the reason I say it's so important, to me, it's a great crime-fighting tool. Don't get me wrong about that. It's amazing what it can do. I mean, homicide rates, all kinds of great stuff. But where, to me, where it really makes its hay is for like silver alerts, missing children and things like that because those are things that it's impossible to go back and find out what happened without video. And what hurts us so bad on silver alerts and missing children is the timeframe. A robbery happens, that victim's done, they're not going to get, they're not going to be victimized again related to that crime. So you go back and solve it. A missing child, a missing dementia patient, they're in danger right then and there. So every minute we wait to find them, something bad can happen. This allows us the ability to immediately go back and look and see. I'll give you an example. Atlanta, which is a FUSES partner, had a dementia patient. She had walked off from a facility, it was late in the evening, it was in the winter. They don't have winters like y'all, but they have some, it's still cold. And so what happened was the officer got there, she was a younger officer, jumped on the platform, said, hey, look, this facility has an exterior camera that we have access to. So they looked and they rewound it and found out where she left. They said, okay, she left the building and we can see where she went across the street to a bus station. In Atlanta, their buses have cameras on them. So they jumped on the camera, figured out what stop she got off, excuse me, what stop she got off of, clear across the other side of the city. A forty-foot, forty-five-minute drive away. They then saw that she was walking towards a park. They don't have any cameras in their parks at that point. But they could send officers there and in about twenty minutes, they found her. Normally, that wouldn't have happened. And the reason I say that wouldn't have happened because one, you wouldn't have been able to figure out what part of Atlanta she went to and certainly not forty-five minutes on the other side. So as far as life-saving, does a great job of that. One of the things I love in my old role, obviously I had to speak to rotary business, everybody, you know, chief's done it a million times. We always get the same thing at the end. Love you guys, want to support you. How do we do it? We've never really had a good answer, I'm going to be honest with you. Think about it right now. How do you help the police? Well, if I see something, say something, say something, that kind of thing, I'll call in. But that's not super great, I'm going to be honest with you, because it hasn't worked that well for us as a society. This does. It gives us something. How can I help you? You can give us your exterior cameras. You can let us see what's going on in your street corner and your parking lot. And hospitals, if somebody's dropping off a shooting victim, that happens. Can we have the exterior? And I'll be honest, hospitals are more strict than anybody as far as hip and everything else, but they're willing to share their exterior cameras. And the reason being is because there's a benefit to the public. It's a benefit to all of us. And that's, I think I've kind of hit your questions, but I know you'll have a few more. So, yes, sir.
Councilor Missions?
It's funny that you mentioned that about hospitals because previously I worked part-time on off days at, for the local healthcare facility. And we actually had a pedestrian on a bicycle get hit right in front of our ambulance and they wouldn't give him the dash cam footage. So, so I get that. So I've done lots of research since. And just to be clear, the agenda request that was made was that we get a discussion about this and since I was on the prevailing side, actually bring it back. to actually bring it back, to reverse it. So that's what, that's what the agenda request was that was made for this. And I'm open to that being modified based on some of the research that I've done, because I do believe that you should absolutely have real time access to the body cams of your police officers and the dash cams in the cars. I think that is crucial for officer safety, almost as important as staffing, right? And, and I think that that is an important piece that we need to be able to have, to be able to watch out for our officers, because I'm surprised you didn't even mention that. I think that that portion of your platform, I love, I think it's great, if there's an officer in distress, being able to instantly see what they see and knowing what you need to send is incredible. So, so that part, I'm okay with that. Public cameras on public properties, giving the police department access to that, I'm okay with that. Where it gets a little concerning for me is the infrastructure that allows the private cameras to enter into that domain. So some of the questions, the first one that I've got for you is, given that this tool is funded using state and federal funding, what limits are in place to prevent federal law enforcement, all the three letter agencies, or even intelligence agencies from accessing the system with camera feeds or metadata without first obtaining a warrant?
Two things, one, the way our system's set up is, it's impossible for somebody else to go into the system to get it. And the reason I say that is, all the, best example I'll give you, like a mom and pop gas station. They've got four cameras, they get, and what we use is a hardware, it's called, we call it a core, think of it like an old school cable box, has a built-in DVR, CEJIS compliance, so that way it fits in for all the evidentiary. But what it does, it's recording those cameras 24/7, but it doesn't stream them. It stays there at the edge, so that way it doesn't use the broadband and mess up the credit card machine, that kind of stuff. But more importantly, it's not, it's not used, it's just staying right there, nobody can access it. Now what happens is when someone logs into FUSIS platform, law enforcement clicks on that camera through the map icon, we use Google Maps, we're very visual, it pulls that information up to the cloud one time, and so that's when they can access it. But again, bear in mind, if it's past that window of four to five days, it's gone, so that no one can do it. And when you say could, you know, FBI, whoever want to do a mass pull, it's impossible to. Our system's not set up for, you can pull video, but there's no way to do it outside of the audit trail, outside of the individual user. And what's great about ours, it's, it's all permission based, so I'll give you an example, schools are really important. In Nashville, we had the Covenant School shooting, I want to make sure everybody understands, that school did everything perfect, everything. Our police department, I'm very proud of, did everything right. We still had six people killed. And in those situations, it's all about time. If it takes you an extra 30 seconds, that's 30 seconds someone shooting at someone. So going back to the cameras and everything, when you have them in schools and we have an alert function that automatically lets everyone know what's going on, but it docks the cameras, it pulls them up immediately for the law enforcement responding to see. So the after action for the Covenant was, hey, we heard shots, we went to where the shots were, that's how we trained, you go to where the shots are. Well, that's the difference, if you have cameras that show you exactly where they are, you're not trying to hear where they are, you know where they are. You know how many, you know how many suspects, you know everything else, and it makes it different. When you go back to private, I'll give you an example, there's a business in Memphis, it's on Beale Street. Obviously Beale Street, if you're familiar with it, cameras they'd like to have. So he has two cameras on the exterior, and he said, hey, I'll share these with you 24/7 police department, you can look at them anytime you want to. I have two cameras inside, the only time you can ever look at them is if I have a shooting call, I have an active shooter in my business. And so it's conditionally set up so that we can't, we can't change that. They dictate it on our end when they put the core in their business. So the only way to change that is if they call, log in and have a change. So it, it gives a lot of control purposely to the donor. And the reason being is some people are like, hey, I'm more than willing to let you see it if there's a shooting call, but no other time. So it, it makes it very conditional. And again, going back to the way our system's set up, there's no way for any one person just pull everything at one time without everybody knowing. It's just, it's impossible the way, it's designed so that it's read only, so you can't go into the devices and circumvent it. But I hope I answered it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you did to an extent, and you kind of hit on one of the-
I ramble, I'm going to warn you right now, I'm a rambler, so you got to rein me in sometimes.
One of the, one of the pieces that I have too is that, you know, like you said, somebody's got to call in to change that, right? So from, so if you want to give, give the live feed access to law enforcement, you got to first purchase a core device, right? So that's the first step. And then you set up your permissions with FUSIS, I would imagine, that then gives them what, what they can, when and how they can access that. I guess if you gave them access to the live feed 24/7, you can do that from the front end, right? Or, and then you can change it at any point.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so the reality is that the ability for that to change is there, right? So, so it can be changed where no permission is needed if, if, not saying it would, not saying that's what your intention is, but what I'm saying is the ability for that to happen is there.
Actually, we have some fail safes in place, sir, specifically for that, and I won't get into the proprietary nature of it, but I'll just say that I can't change somebody's core settings without them being involved. And I, I can't discuss more than that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm not asking you to.
But just so you know, yes, sir, your concern is one that has been voiced before, so it was addressed in that manner when they created it.
So I guess the, the next question is probably kind of similar to what we discussed with Flock, is as far as data retention policies on the data that's collected, I know I heard you mentioned four to five days while the system is active. So what are those data retention policies and as far as being able to, can you go back and query this thing? So, so I know that there's something in there that says they can, you said you're not going to do facial recognition, I appreciated that answer, that's, that was, that was great. But I do know that it actively looks for license plates, correct?
No, ours doesn't, it's just, think of it this way, we take dumb cameras, for lack of a better word, like let's say you buy four Costco cameras, Amazon, whatever, and put them up, 1080p resolution's all it requires, it's like $250 for four cameras. Those cameras are just streaming, they don't do anything, they don't have any functionality. When you put a core on there, it allows you to rewind, search through, check for different things. So that's what makes it the smart camera, for lack, like I said, a lack of a better word. The functionality we have, and I guess your point is, could at some point in the future someone add some functionality to those cores? And the way our firmware works, it's updated obviously, and it's changed, but any large things like that, you would have to physically change the core, and that's, there's no way to really do that because they're already in the business, does that make sense? Like, if there's 100 businesses donating to the police department, that's 100 cores out there, one for each business. So if we were going to add firmware that changed it to that degree, we would have to physically go to every one of those locations and do it.
So I guess the question, and I guess you can clarify or correct me if I'm wrong on this, but from what I was reading on your website, I thought I saw that it has the ability, like if LPD was to send out a BOLO for somebody matching a specific description, right? Do the cameras, the cameras have the ability that are on the core AI to look for that description, correct?
The way we, and I'll give you the, I'd give you a demo, but it would torture you, it would torture everybody because they're like 45 minutes long, but we can look for certain identifiers through the AI, and it's like, you know, vehicle make, model color. We can look for bicycle, a person with a backpack, a person with a wagon, really general things, because it's, the AI isn't there, and it's, honestly, we don't really have the ability to make it more there. And there's some camera systems out there that have some pretty amazing AI functionality, that's not what our goal is. Our goal as a company is to bring in those private assets for the police department to just give them access to it, to give them access to the, the cameras that are sitting at, you know, at the businesses right now and facing outward. So they, our goal isn't to, we're not an AI company, if that makes sense. We do have some of that functionality, obviously, for searching and doing different things, like I can put in there, I want to look for somebody on a bicycle, and it'll pull up everybody on a bicycle for me. And then I can turn around and I can pull that video up, and I can take a picture and I can send to the officer, say, hey, here's the guy you're looking for, which is precision policing realistically compared to what we used to do.
So, so that's, I guess that's the kind of data that's being collected?
Well, it's, when you say collected, bear in mind that it's, this doesn't go to servers. It's not saved on servers at all, it's saved literally on the core, so you've got a two terabyte hard drive. And if it's pulling four cameras in, it's good for about four days. And after that four days, it runs out of space, so it starts rewriting it.
So you guys are searching the data that's in the core?
And that's what I said, that's what we call tactical. Some people do use this as like a video management system for a very short term fund, obviously. But, yeah, I mean, that's, the whole thing is, we want to capture that four or five day window, because if it's a violent crime, they're going to find out about it within that timeframe. Sadly, sometimes property crimes, like Chief mentioned, 30 days out, we're not going to be able to help you on that. Because it's just, it would be so expensive to put that big a hard drive into all the cores, it wouldn't be functional then.
So, I know you said you're not an AI company, but are there, are there, I guess, to the extent that you can answer this, are there, is there an effort to expand that capability and to be able to search for, collect more things in the future with?
I think that's true of any AI functionality, I mean, we're, obviously, it's pushing the envelope on a lot of stuff, but like I said, ours, we limit ours to very basic functionality that's significant, that's appropriate and useful for law enforcement. I mean, we could, you could say, hey, we want to be able to search for, you know, spotted dogs, but that's not a benefit to law enforcement. So that's what I'm saying, we keep ours geared towards what's helpful for investigations, for finding missing people, saving lives, that kind of stuff. We're sort of, we're a little boring in that regard.
And I guess, you know, this is for all four of you, you know, my concern, you know, you mentioned you had to police proof it, right?
Yeah.
Is, you know, the reality is, you know, people can do things at any time, you know, perfectly normal, good people can do things at any time for what may seem like a justifiable reason at the time. Working in healthcare, knew of plenty of situations involved where people accessed data protected by HIPAA and things like that, and when they were not supposed to do it. And, you know, the, the, I guess the, the expectation that I have is that you actually have policies in place to be reviewing that stuff, to make sure that that's not happening, because-
If you don't mind, I don't want to interrupt you, but are you familiar with CLEIA standards?
What standards?
CLEIA, it's a really long acronym, but what it is, it's a national organization that sets standards for law enforcement. I'm not su, I know y'all are accredited in different ways, every, there's different, yeah, huh? Okay, perfect, that makes sense, thank you, sir. CLEIA's the highest standard. It's the one that says like, only I think 5% of all the agencies in the country qualify for CLEIA. It's a really, really stringent standard. Be proud of your department, they're a part of that. But what that means is there's, anytime you start having intentional data, things like that, body cameras, things like that, CLEIA has specific standards of you have to audit it. You have to do audits every so often, based on whatever your recording might be, however long it is. So their standards are already set, so to your question, yes, sir, if, if they're CLEIA certified, they're going to have standards where they have to do audit checks, they have to do things, and it has to be random, and it's, I won't say it's monotonous, because it's a very appropriate thing, but if you're the one doing them, they're tough, so.
And, and along with what I was saying previously, I also would appreciate if there's some way where we could, again, create that check and balance, where anything expanded as far as the capability, capacity, ability to leverage that AI with upgrades or whatever, where, where the big brother capabilities would continue to grow, that there would be a way for city council to be involved in that discussion before that, that happened. I feel fairly confident, even with my opposition to this, that it's going to pass, so I'm just putting that out there. And, but there's a lot of things that I, that I do like about the system that I think are great, and I do love the essential reverse lookup capability for the people that aren't plugged into the, the real time stuff. One of the first things that popped in my head was, why aren't we doing this with Lynchburg alerts? Do we have the ability to drop a pin with Lynchburg alerts, put a mile around it, and send some, send all those people in that, in that net essentially, with that mile, a text message or an email, or even an automated phone call? You know, we could get Captain Hinckley to do a great robocall for us, I'm sure, and he's got a good voice. And we could notify people that maybe aren't even hooked up to this and say, hey, here's a link, can you drop us our video footage? You know, we've already got so many people in the city signed up to that system, is there a way that we could use something we already have just to notify people when there's a crime in their area and say, here's a secure link for you to upload your video if you have video footage?
Sir, we actually have functionality in FUSIS, there's, like I said, I could torture you with a long demo, but one of the things we do-
Probably wouldn't torture me. I challenge you to try that.
Well, oh, that can be pretty boring, but one of the things we have is a notify functionality that does allow you to do that, and you can geofence it and send it out in that manner, so you got it, sir. Along with the alert function, which I hope you pass on to your schools at some point.
That has to happen.
It's, I will say that, to me, one of the best things that we do, and it was a, it's a law in Florida called a list of laws, it says every faculty and staff member has to have a personal alert on there. And ours is through an app on the phone, it's really, again, goes back to that simple. When you open the app, it's a red button, you hold it, and it calls the police, but it also does an immediate alert to every, everybody on the FUSIS platform, and it docks the five closest cameras to that person. So if the teacher's outside for recess, it'll pull the five closest cameras outside. If they're inside for the cafeteria, so you have immediate information on what's going on. And it also helps with the over response, because you look and say, oh, regrettably, kid fell on the playground, broke his arm, so that's more medical, we don't need to send SWAT team. Or if it is something where we need the team, they know where to go, and they know exactly where to go. But what I love about it is we do a lot of mapping on ours, so there's no doubt where you're going in the business and everything, but what's great is that app they can share, you can make it timed out, so they could give a FUSIS alert that's got a 10 hour lifespan to substitute teachers. So the day they show up, they've, no one is without an alert to make sure that they're safe.
I guess one question I have about that is, do you guys have the ability to have the actual building plans uploaded into that, so they'll have real time access to that?
Yeah, and that, that's what, that's a big part of, again, we're very visual, and it goes back to, and I don't mean it ugly, if it's not simple, you're not going to use it when it gets crazy, plain and simple. And so we put floor plans in, in fact, we've had officers that took a picture with their phone, with their phone of like a fire escape plan, and we'll use that for the mapping. But yeah, that's a big part of it, is when you're going somewhere, if you've never been there, it doesn't matter, because you've got cameras showing you what's going on, and you've got a map of the building, so you know exactly what room you're going to, you're not, what exits closest, which way to go. We're about making sure you have real time actionable intelligence to do the best you can.
No, I appreciate that, and like I said, there's a lot of great features about it, but I'm just very-
I understand.
-apprehensive about that, the rights of our citizens and that data being collected, essentially.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, you've given a wonderful explanation, I think it's been extremely helpful and informative. I think the main stresser here that I think has been helpful is that this is completely voluntary.
Yes, ma'am.
Nobody's forcing anything on anyone, and I think that's the most important thing that, you know, was explained, but you did a great job. I really appreciate you being here, and Chief as well, so thank you so much.
And I apologize for the Tennessee drawl, I know that's a little tough sometimes.
No, it's great, thank you, thank you for being here.
Madam May?
Sir.
Councilmember Missions brought up something about kind of procedural component. This went to finance in early January, there were two different votes, the second one one being on consent, um, Ms., uh, Councilmember Dolan was present. Mr. Missions was in the prevailing party, brought this back, um, we're here. So procedurally then, does that then mean, because I just want to be with truth in lending, um, based on those votes, we've contracted for and spent $250,000 to contract with them, we're underway, we've had 13 some light businesses, several different other folks kind of, uh, sign up for this because of the process. So maybe looking to Mad, uh, Mr. Friedman on this, so is this something then now that comes back under general business on the 28th or how would this, how does this work?
So, um, I think because this matter has been, uh, voted upon by city council, vetted and went through the finance committee, um, certainly council as a body could, uh, allow it to come back to, via motion to reconsider. It wouldn't be appropriate to do one, uh, as part of the work session unless you all had that two thirds, uh, agreement to be able to consider that. Certainly if, uh, you all wanted to give direction to city staff informally to bring it back, I think you could, but I think this falls a little bit outside of the typical realm of, uh, council members being able to, uh, ask that something come back when it's already been vetted and approved by city council. So certainly if there's direction from a majority, you know, staff will, will want to follow that, but, uh, with that, I, I would submit it to you all.
If I may?
Council Missions?
Um, I don't think I need to play the audio from the presentation to us where the camera system thing was never mentioned. Um, and, you know, I sent you guys the video, the clip from, from the presentation at the council meeting where, um, this component, that is to me the most concerning and slippery slope of the idea of putting up cameras around our entire city, uh, and giving government access to those cameras, um, is something that should have been brought before us. I never would have voted to approve that. Never. I will take the hit for maybe not looking up FUSIS, right? That's my fault. And I apologize to the citizens for that, for not looking that up. But it was presented with some detailed information about a real time crime center and the new police headquarters and this, that and the other, was vetted through the finance committee. So, uh, I'll know that I now have to do my due diligence on, on those things. Um, but the question that I have then is, when would it be appropriate to do a motion to reconsider?
So, um, what I would submit is, uh, a motion to be, to reconsider could be brought up at really at any point within the, uh, the rules of procedure. But typically when council has given a, uh, direction on a matter, it's not something that council may typically just put back on the agenda. So, um, that's why I bring up the idea for simplicity purposes of seeing if there's a majority this evening that would want to entertain a motion to reconsider at a later date, given that, uh, you've brought it up for potential considerations at a different point.
And I think that's kind of, um, that, that just doesn't seem right to me, that, that we have to get approval as elected representatives to, to get a motion to reconsider? Is that, is that how tight these rules of procedures have come, that, that we're not actually, um, able to be on the prevailing side of something that, you know, we get more information and find out that we can't try to bring it back?
No, I think you could make a motion to amend the agenda, uh, to have the motion to reconsider be heard on it, but as I mentioned, for simplicity purposes, council, uh, no longer on its rules of procedure votes during a work session, but can discuss if matters can come back and give consensus or, uh, direction to city staff, but certainly if you, uh, wanted as part of our rules of procedure to make a motion to amend the agenda for, for even this evening. Um, but what I would submit, uh, is typically, uh, these types of matters, because it didn't involve a license or a franchise or other things, these are matters within the city manager's control and power by ordinance of the city. These are part of the manager's duties. Certainly council can, uh, legislate and engage in other activities under state law and its charter, but, um, I guess what I would caution to council is, uh, being careful about setting a precedent of, um, entering to matters which would, uh, be under the manager's control unless it really, really has good reason for doing so.
Well, I think, and this is, this is what it comes back to for me, um, is that I swore an oath and that means something. The constitution means something to me. Um, and I am, like I shared with, uh, I think, I can't remember his name now, Shane, Shane was the Flock representative, um, the gentleman from Tennessee that was just here a moment ago. There's a lot of functionality and features in this platform that I am fully in support of. Um, I'm fully in support of having live feeds in our schools, absolutely. I'm fully in support of our headquarters having access to the live feeds from our officers' body cams and, and dash cams. Um, but it is the, the, um, the, the link that creates the ability to livestream somebody's private cameras in their residences that concerns me. It's the potential for this technology getting better down the road and have we just given this up to city staff to essentially go do whatever they want to do with it as it grows and gets better and things improve? Um, or as the elected representatives of the people, do we have to be the check and balance to make sure that we don't take this where it needs, somewhere where it doesn't need to go? So what, what I would like to see essentially is some way to be able to, to limit that and not just give.
Solution, if that may?
Please.
I'd, I'd like to hear Councilman Helgason's solution.
Well, I'd like.
Since he has, she still has the floor.
Well, I'm going to call on Vice Mayor Feraldi because he's asked for the floor. Thank you.
I'm certainly open to what Councilmember Helgason wants to offer. I would point us, uh, to item number 10, section 67, I believe, motion to reconsider, the council may vote to reconsider its action on a matter. The motion to reconsider must be made no later than the succeeding regular meeting of council and can only be made by a member who voted by the prevailing side. It's my understanding, according to that, it would not be able to be reconsidered. So.
That's correct. That's the general rule that governs city council's rules of procedure, but if there was a majority of council that wanted to, to do it, it certainly could, but it would have to suspend its rules of procedure in doing so.
I think one, one way possibly forward, you know, because I was here for, I saw the presentation for the consent agenda for the finance committee and none of this was discussed. And as soon as I heard it, I sent Winter an, an email and was, was concerned about it. And so with that being the case, there, even though there still may be a majority that says, hey, we're for it, fine. Allow for the vote, whether it be, uh, you know, the motion to reconsider on this evening and those who are, at least allows for somebody like myself, for example, who wish I heard that before and I would have voted against it at that time, um, it may not overturn it, but at least you, what you're doing is allowing a little bit of deference to a council member, as, as Councilmember Missions stated, that, that he wished you would have seen that before. But again, that wasn't discussed, so the motion to reconsider could be done tonight, um, or having it on the 28th or whatever time you want to vote on it. Um, it doesn't have to change the vote necessarily as far as the outcome, but at least allows for someone to have a clear conscience on something that they hold dear, that they voted for without hearing the presentation. So I think that could be something that could be, uh, done fairly readily at this evening's meeting or next meeting, um, and allow for the vote, even though as, as the vice mayor stated, it's not the next meeting, allow for the vote so he can clear his conscience and I can clear my conscience and, uh, as I heard about this, I was in much more trouble. So.
Council Missions?
And, and actually, I, I think that the, the best way forward personally, my, my opinion on this would actually be to have a public hearing, um, on this to see what the public has to say about this, um, basically being deployed in our city, because it's a big deal. Um, I do believe that we should be protecting our, our police officers and our schools and things like that in our public spaces with this technology, but as far as, uh, the, the, the private camera link into people's, um, private property, I think that's, that's different. And, you know, one of the things that is kind of interesting, uh, to me is when I look at just even the, the Facebook announcement of Hill City Connect on the Lynchburg Police Department's, um, Facebook page. Dragonnet operations and surveillance are in direct violation of privacy laws regardless of who owns the camera. Um, the issue is that they're really not sure individual camera owners are opting, but these cameras would be highly networked with artificial intelligence, building metadata analysis on cars and people simply walking by. You know, the, this, these are the concerns that the public has. You must be out of your minds. So I guess you guys want to be like London trying to usher in a new surveillance state. Oh, go to surveillance state, just what we need, encouraging people to voluntarily forego their fourth amendment rights, go pound sandwich, police department. No, absolutely not. The only criminal activity I'm reporting is the ones perpetrated by cops. Like this, this is what public, people in the public are actually saying about this. And I think that we're doing ourselves a disservice by not allowing them to come speak to this issue and then making a decision on it. Uh, like I said, I am fully in support of our officers on the street and we need to do everything we can do to keep them safe, especially when we are low staffed right now. Um, I am fully in support of specifically the schools. This is a must have technology in our school buildings, absolutely, all day, every day. Um, but there's a lot of people that have concerns about their privacy, there's a lot of people that have concerns about their fourth amendment rights and I'm not going to just stand by and, and not, um, fight for their rights.
Okay. We've, we've heard a lot, thank you, Councilman Missions. Um, so here's where I'm going to kind of throw this out here to council. We've had a very lengthy presentation, a lot of back and forth with quite a few questions that have now been answered. So I think any concerns that, uh, were, had prior to now that, that, uh, you don't feel like, uh, anyone up here, um, had explained to them when it was passed in January, um, have been addressed. I think our presenter did a wonderful job addressing the questions. We've had emails answered by council members, uh, our chief has answered questions, we had our former presenter, uh, from Flock, a lot of questions have been answered tonight. I think we have a much better understanding. No one's putting cameras up around the city, uh, as far as the FUSIS program, that is voluntary. Um, and I think if we wanted to just do a consensus thing, is there anyone here on council, aside from Councilman Missions and Councilman Helgason, that want to see this I don't care to see it reconsidered.
Well, the reason I, it's, it's voluntary, so it's not like they're sneaking up and looking at you. I mean, if you volunteer to do it, then you are, of course, agreeing to it, right?
So we don't have a majority consensus to reconsider it, so let's move on. All right, roll call. Dr. Wilder.
In the puzzled group, they had a bike show and a, a vehicle show on Saturday at the Plaza, I'm sorry. Um, it was a tremendous turnout, so I want to thank our community members for working together, uh, for that puzzle project, because Blake Bryant is in charge of that. I'd like to commend him and his team for working for our community. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
Thank you.
Councilman Helgason?
The September 30th enrollment numbers for schools just, I don't know if they've released them yet, but their, the enrollment numbers are down again. So they do the September 30th, so enrollment is down yet again, but interestingly enough, pre-K numbers are up. And so I'm curious about how that affects our state aid. You know, so we're now having, we get state money for students, um, you know, K through 12, but I'm not sure necessarily about the pre-K. Um, and obviously it shows the point of continuing decline in enrollment. Secondly, the, uh, I have prepared a, a vision statement that I have before your desk and I'll read it for those of you here and at home as a possible starting place for us to come up with a good vision for Lynchburg City Council. Lynchburg City Council is committed to promoting a limited and efficient government that fosters economic growth and individual liberty. We believe in responsible stewardship of taxpayer resources and will prioritize the efficient delivery of essential public services by utilizing fiscal responsibility and budgetary restraints as we make monetary decisions. Our policies will be rooted in God given values that foster strong families, personal responsibility and community involvement. We will work tirelessly to ensure that our city, Lynchburg, remains a safe, welcoming place for individuals and businesses by promoting economic growth and prosperity in our community. Because the free enterprise system is the most productive supplier of human needs and economic justice, it will be our guide. I hope that we can soon, uh, whether it be at our, one of our retreats, but we use, begin coming up with a vision statement. This is a good framework and those of you may want a wordsmith, but I think this says what I think is really critical for us at city council as we create a vision statement. Hopefully we can adopt it.
Thank you. Council Missions?
Um, so I appreciate the feedback you guys gave me on, on the item that I have requested, but what I would like to see are some options on what we could do, uh, to, with specifically probably zoning as far as elective abortion clinics go in Lynchburg to prevent them from, um, being in our city. Uh, there may, I don't know if there's any facilities that are performing elective abortions now. I do understand that, um, from, from what I read about what they tried to do in Bristol, that there was one facility that, that was there and that obviously they can't, um, grandfather something out, so that would be something, uh, to consider as well. Um, there, there is no, um, uh, constitutional right to an abortion. The Dobbs case made that clear. So, um, you know, I don't think there's anybody that we can, as a city, defend more than our unborn, they're the most vulnerable in our population and I think it would be important to do that. Um, there's been a history in Virginia of, of localities that have actually put things in place. Fairfax City did it in 2013, they actually put some restrictions in place that, that caused it, uh, I think it was the largest, uh, elective abortion clinic in Virginia to close, um, in 2013 in Fairfax City, and then Manassas followed through after that, um, which is kind of interesting, not examples I would expect to see in, uh, Virginia. And, and I, I think that that would get overwhelming support. Um, I know even our mayor is, I think she previously was or still is a member of the Board of Directors of the Blue Ridge Pregnancy Center and even, uh, gave them a keynote address, um, at a recent fundraiser, so, um, I just really would like to see what our options are, would be as far as zoning ordinances go to prevent, uh, the, the innocent lives of the unborn being taken in our city.
Councilman Taylor?
I'm good.
Vice Mayor Feraldi? Okay, thank you. All right, tonight I will be highlighting the Department of Human Resources. The mission of the city of Lynchburg's Department of Human Resources is to champion great performance. By supporting the city's workforce, the department enables them to provide unparalleled service to our citizens. The priorities of the department are to be a trusted resource to city employees, ensure that effective communication is valued and encouraged, enable our workforce to be engaged in personal and organizational improvement, be a best practices leader and hire and retain great performers. The Department of Human Resources has 10 staff members, five of whom hold at least one human resources certification. The staff focuses on a full spectrum of human resources functions. These include employee benefits, compensation, employee relations, workforce development and training, and recruitment. Speaking of recruitment, we have opportunities available in several of our city departments. If anyone listening at home is interested in joining our fantastic workforce, please visit our website at www.lynchburgva.gov/jobs. All right, closed session. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss probable litigation and other means of enforcement to enforce the ban against skill games pursuant to 2.2-3711A7 and 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go in closed meeting?
Just if I could. Can we push this to tonight at 6:30? We're already a half hour past and we got to go and, and come back for our 7:30. If we could do this closed session after our 7:30.
Okay, do you know we have to go to the legislative tent tonight?
Councilman Helgason, we do have a guest with us that'll be joining us, the common law's attorney versus having her come back.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, vote.
Sorry.
The motion passes 7:00.
All right, we are now enclosed.